Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Before you guys, we're gonna start. So, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's a 3049th Regular Village Board Meeting of March 25th, 2013. Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer.
Here.
Lentz.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Nutschnag.
Here.
Boss.
Here.
And Semple.
Mr. Semple is not able to be with us tonight due to a death in his immediate family. His brother-in-law passed away, so he asked me to mention that. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. Have the United States of America, and to the Republic, for its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 25th, 2013, Regular Village Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion is by Trustee Meyer, second by Trustee Lentz. I do have a correction. It says that Mayor Kessler opened the floor for public commentary. I was not here that day, so that was Mayor Pro Tem Nutschnag. Any other corrections for the minutes? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nutschnag.
Yes.
Boss.
Abstain.
Motion carries. Next is approval of minutes from the Regular Village Boarding of March 11th, 2013. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is by Boss. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Sullivan. Discussion on the minutes. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Boss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nutschnag.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next point in the agenda is an opportunity for public comments. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to make a public comment, please let me know by raising your hand, so I can see it, and we'll call you up one at a time. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Am I missing anyone? Yell out if I am. Okay, we'll close the floor and move on. It's my pleasure to announce that we are presenting an outstanding citizen award and proclamation to John Lynn this evening. We had a reception that began at 6:30, and will continue to 8 o'clock PM for those who couldn't come up until a later time. And that's going to be across the hall in Conference Room B. The coffee is provided by McDonald's here in town, and the refreshments are provided by Loretta's Italian Cafe, also here in town, so we thank them. We have a little presentation that we'll do this evening. I'd like to recognize a few people. One is Amy Lynn, who is the Executive Director of the Illinois Theater Association. Amy, where are our... Okay, Amy's there, okay. Then we have Richard Gannon, the American Association... Who's with the American Association of Community Theater, Region 3, which covers Illinois, Indiana, Wisconsin, Minnesota, and Ohio. And Mr. Gannon, where are you? Okay, he's there. And then we have the Kirk Players Board of Directors and Members. So if you can either wave your hand or stand up. There's quite a few of them, okay. First, I'd like to introduce Mr. Gannon, again of the American Association of Community Theater, who will make a presentation of the AACT's Robert E. Guard Superior Volunteer Award to John Lynn. And the award that they began... That they created and were awarding Mr. Lynn this year is kind of what got the ball rolling on the whole presentation this evening. So, Mr. Gannon, if you would, if you could give Mr. Flynn an address for your association.
Yes, well, it's a Dallas-Fort Worth address. I don't have the exact address, but...
Okay, well, we'll... That's close enough.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rich Gannon. I'm here to join the celebration as representative of the American Association of Community Theater, which is a national organization that provides resources and acts as an advocate for community theater. There are roughly 5,000, 5,500 community theaters in the United States. Each year, over 1 million volunteers step forward and do the work of community theater. And that's very easy to understand, because community theaters fill one important need in any community, and that is a cultural need. In 1966, Mr. John Lynn saw that need here in Mundaline, and he stepped forward and built Kirk Players. As I said, there's roughly 1 million volunteers each year doing the work of community theaters. So I don't think I need to convince very many people here that we're in the presence of one in a million. So tonight, to honor Mr. Lynn for his dedication to community theater and his untiring efforts on behalf of Kirk Player... Kirk Players, the American Association of Community Theater presents him with the Robert E. Guard Award. John, congratulations.
Amy, I think you have a few words. John, you can just stand up there.
We're not done with you yet. Good evening. My name is Amy Lynn Newlin. I am the Executive Director of the Illinois Theater Association. I'll give you the address later. I am here on behalf of the Illinois Theater Association for three reasons. One is to commit our... To our relationship with the AACT and recognize the value in recognizing excellence in theater in general. John Lynn is an exceptional example of that. The second is to recognize for a moment, although this is a national award, I want to bring it back to the local level for a moment. It starts with one person. It starts with John Lynn. He has a passion, a dream. He shares it with somebody else, who shares it with somebody else, and the result is a million lives affected after. I am so impressed, as an advocate of theater in Illinois, that you have all put together a celebration of this magnitude. There will be a national celebration taking place, but the significance of having a local celebration is so important, not only personally and to build community, but also for advocacy reasons. The fact that we are now in front of the Mayor, Board, recognizing your volunteerism, your efforts, the Kirk Players, community theater in general, is very important. I like to say that people either get theater, or they don't. If they don't get it, it's because they haven't bitten... Been bitten by the bug, and they haven't caught the fever. But once they've been bitten, they've caught the fever. You have caught the fever, and because of your fever, we are all going to be inflicted, if we haven't already been. And I'm hoping that you, by being a part of this, you're helping to spread the word about the value of theater in Illinois and nationwide, so thank you. And the third and most important reason is, John, congratulations. And I say congratulations in a weird way, because when you do something you love, it feels weird to be congratulated for it. So instead of congratulations, maybe I'll just say, "Thank you for inspiring so many people. Thank you for all you have done for the Kirk Players, for this community. You have a gem. The Kirk Players also received the ITA Award of Excellence two years ago. You're a gem of a community theater in your midst. Thank you, congratulations. Enjoy your evening of celebration."
Thank you very much.
I think the mayor has a word, and then we'll allow you to say what you need to say.
He'll allow me to.
We'll allow you to.
Amy, many inquiring minds want to know, is there any relationship between your last name and John's last name? I know I'm not the only guy here thinking.
Amy Lynn Newlin.
John, it gives me pleasure to read this proclamation into the record this evening. It begins with, "Whereas John Lynn formed Kirk Players Community Theater in 1966, as an all-volunteer theatrical troupe dedicated to enriching the cultural climate of our area, and committed to providing educational, technical, and financial assistance to community service organizations; and whereas John served as Director of the Kirk Players for 35 years, and continues to serve as a Board Member emeritus; and whereas for 47 years, John's vision has guided the Kirk Players towards excellence in community service, as well as theatrical performance, including producing 166 mainstage plays that have been attended by over 100,000 patrons; presenting free summer theater workshops since 1967 that have educated over 3,600 children and 1,100 adults in the performing arts; instituting the John W. Lynn Performing Arts Scholarship Program in 1999 that has provided over $13,000 in college grants to high school seniors; providing additional grant support to the Mundaline High School and Carmel High School Theater Departments and the three Mundaline Area Elementary Schools; participating in community events such as the Mundaline Centennial, Mundaline Beauty Pageants, the County Fair, Santa's Cottage Relay for Life, Fine Arts Festival, and Farmer's Market; and whereas in recognition of his lifetime of service to community theater, the American Association of Community Theaters will present John Lynn with the Robert E. Guard Superior Volunteer Award at its National Festival in June 2013. And whereas for 47 years, John Lynn has been the inspiration and creative force behind the Kirk Players, a community theater that truly embodies community and service, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Mundaline, Illinois, that the records of the village be inscribed with this proclamation as a permanent tribute to John Lynn, outstanding citizen of the Village of Mundaline. And be it further proclaimed that the original copy of this proclamation be signed by the Mayor of the Village of Mundaline, be attested to by the Village Clerk, within the Village seal affixed thereto, and presented to John Lynn as a token of the Village Board's esteem and in commendation of all he has done for the Village of Mundaline. So, John?
I can't begin to say how I feel right now. For a little country boy from the sticks of Georgia, who was in a play before he ever saw one. And that was one day after my 17th birthday. Should be standing here in front of a gathering of village officials and friends and supporters is beyond words. The volunteerism business is a strange thing, because I was looking through an album I have at home, and there is a picture from the newspaper. I can't tell for sure, but I think it's the Tribune. And I'm standing on the back of a truck, and I remembered that what we used to do, we used to drive the trucks and pick up scrap iron and newspapers. This was in 1942, in the war effort. And so that my volunteer feelings got started early, and I've been doing it ever since. Obviously, there are just a great many people, and there's no way in the world I could name them, who have been helpful with that. I bless the Lord that I have had the stamina and the help to... Can do all the things that the Kirk Players have done. And I just... I treasure this evening and all of you people who came to share it with me. And I don't want to take up much of your board meeting. I know you guys got business to take care of, and I want you to do that and do that well. But God bless you all, and thank you so much.
There's a few other people in the room, John, that I know you've crossed paths with, and the most notable of them are Betty Hermes and a number of Miss Mundalines, junior Miss Mundalines, and little Miss Mundalines. And as long as I've been around as an elected official, I think you've been emceeing the pageants. I don't know how long you've done that, but I know there's...
1980.
1980, okay. Well, that... You've certainly put in your dues on that one as well. So they're certainly a very notable group of young ladies who are here and show their support and appreciation for what you've done as well. What I'd ask the audience members to do is we've got two more presentations and awards, and if possible, we could stay through those, and then adjourn anyone who wishes to continue celebrating with John and his family across the hall for however long you want. Well, within reason. So if I might, I will go on to our next presentation this evening, and this is the... An award from the 98th General Assembly, and Representative Carol Sente, who represents a portion of Mundaline along with Representative Ed Sullivan, who represents the other portion, who is here this evening to acknowledge Chief Gunther. So Representative Sente, I'll turn the mic over to you.
Good evening. Always nice to see everyone. I know you have a full evening as well, but it is not always that we have the opportunity to welcome a new police chief into a village, so I wanted to commemorate this occasion. I've had the good fortune and pleasure to work with the Village of Mundaline and the Department on many pieces of legislation that have moved forward, and Representative Sullivan and I have worked diligently on both of those. He regrets that he could not be here this evening. But this is from both of us, and like I said, once again, it's never just one person. Chief Rose saw fitting, and so did the Board and the community, that Deputy Chief Gunther needed to move up and be the chief and lead the village in the next generation and move forward, and I just wanted to honor that occasion in him, because I've had the good pleasure of working with him on all these items as well. So, just a little something from the General Assembly. All the best for many, many years of success, and commemorate being sworn in, and thank you, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thanks to see you all, and I'll like to also congratulate Mr. Lynn and maybe join you in your celebration next door. Thank you.
Chief, when you've been at it for about 47 years, you'll get three standing ovations, but none tonight. You're just starting, don't worry. Finally, in terms of presentations and awards, I'd like to recognize our Human Relations Commission. Maria Sanchez, I believe, is going to take the lead in a little presentation they have to tell us what the Human Relations Commission's been up to this year. Am I correct or incorrect on that? There was a slight look of panic on your face when I said you were in charge. So I know she... Jennifer Care is with her. Jesus Aguirre is here. Anyone else from the Commission?
Amanda.
Okay.
Good evening. As you know, we're here to present an annual report about the Human Relations Commission and some of the activities that we have been working on during the last year. And... And also, we divided the certain parts of the activities that we have been working on, so we can talk about them. And among them is the book club that we have been running this past year. We meet the second Tuesday of every month in Fremont Library, and we usually choose themes that have to do with diversity and human issues to be able to discuss and meet with other people. And what else? Are you going to... Diversity Award?
Yeah. Okay. Hi, I'm Jennifer Care, and I'm the newest member to the Human Relations Commission. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to serve on this. It's been a great experience. I've met a lot of new people, and there are a lot of exciting things happening. We... The Human Relations Commission launched an annual diversity award program in 2011 with the support of the village. The program celebrates the actions of individuals and organizations for their efforts in recognizing and embracing diversity. The Commission accepts nominations and selects recipients from four different categories and six different areas of criteria. It is inspirational and impressive to see the work that is being done in the community encompassing acceptance and outreach to our community's diverse population. This year, the Commission recognized one organization and one individual with the award. The community category individual recipient was Valerie Walker, Mundaline ASO Board Member, honored for her work creating a positive community soccer experience, and for her efforts with the Very Important Player or VIP program, serving persons with special needs. The VIP program also held their 10th anniversary celebration on Sunday, March 10, and the Human Relations Commission was invited and delighted to attend that. The community category organization recipient was the Lake County Center for Independent Living, an organization dedicated to empowering people with disabilities to lead self-directed lives as valued members of the community. After the awards were presented here in the boardroom by the Mayor and the trustees, a small reception was held in the following room to honor the award recipients and celebrate with their family and friends. Tasty treats were provided by two Mundaline restaurants, Taste of Paris and Loretta's, and the local newspapers were there to capture the moment. Just in honor of essence of time, I'm just going to move on to the second portion that I'm going to talk about, which is the multicultural festival. Last year, our future programming goals included development of cultural programming for culinary events, dance groups, musicians, art installations, and other culturally diverse experiences. The HRC is exploring the possibility of hosting a celebration of cultures titled Mundaline One World Festival. This is modeled after Skokie's Festival of Cultures, founded in 1991 by our own Mrs. Kessler. Skokie's annual festival is free to the public and now consists of two days of ethnic folk music and dance, food, arts, and crafts, international children's games, beer tasting, and merchandise bazaar, and dozens of cultural booths and displays. The festival was started with a mission to promote a better understanding among the residents of different ethnic, cultural, and religious backgrounds. Similarly, the Mundaline Human Relations Commission, with the support of the village, wishes to partner with our Park and Recreation District, the Community Connection, the After School Coalition, Fremont Public Library, and other interested organizations to develop this multicultural festival. A committee board has been meeting for the last several weeks, and we're very excited about bringing this experience to the residents of Mundaline. In the past, the Mayor and Village Board have encouraged the HRC to explore this type of community event. In the ordinance that was developed, the Commission is tasked with pursuing community-wide programs of education to encourage understanding between and among residents, businesses, community groups, and organizations. Additionally, the HRC has the function to host, as needed, community-wide celebrations of diversity and understanding within the village. A multicultural festival influenced by the successful Skokie model will address three of the six functions assigned to the Commission. And I also wanted to quote Mayor Kessler from a July 10, 2008 Chicago Tribune article, where he says, "We want to bring people together, allow them to learn about each other, and we think this is the perfect opportunity to do just that."
Good evening. My name is Jesus Aguirre. I'm also a member of the Human Relations Commission, and I've been working on this all day, but I forgot all about it already, so I'm just gonna talk about Health and Wellness Expo that we had over in Mundaline days, 2012. That's the second year we've done that, and any of you guys who attended probably noticed that was a very good thing to do. It was one way to make our community aware of the health awareness, make them aware of it. One of the good things we did have was Zumba and yoga. You know, the people really seems to enjoy that. And we're looking forward to continue doing that. She mentioned it, one of our things that we want to do is bring the community together. You know, everybody, you know, we want to make sure it's... We're a one community, and that's one of our biggest challenges out there. The next thing I'm here to talk about is the summer concerts. We have a band over at the park. They play international blend of music. A lot of people, they take that opportunity to go out there and relax, listen to music. So some of them even got motivated and started dancing, so that was a pretty cool thing to do. I encourage you guys to come and join us for future concerts. And it seems like music always seems to bring people together. It's one way for us trying to bring people together. That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay. About future programming, we have some activities that we are trying to have in programming, like seeking speakers that can provide insight in human relations issues, increase the Human Relations Commission's presence in the community, and also, like Jennifer said, that continue to recognize individuals for actions that contribute to furthering diverse relationships and meaningful human interactions. Any guidance the Village Board may have to what types of projects the HRC could focus on would be welcome. And the support of the Board, we hope to continue working on programs and events that bring the community together and assure all residents are afforded the opportunity of mutual respect, cooperation, and understanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amanda distributed to the Board earlier a document entitled HRC FYE 2013: Progress Report and Budget for FYE 2014. There's a request for $7,000 in the next year's budget, which we'll discuss at some upcoming budget meetings in the very near future. So please direct your attention to that document and keep it, please. Thank you very much for your indulgence during these awards, which are very important to our community. Those of you who wish to adjourn to the next room are more than welcome to do so, and we'll take a moment or two to allow for that transition, and then we'll get on to some of the more boring things that I have to talk about under my report. Signs and things like that. Lentz, you have to do the Public Safety Award, or Public Safety Report. Okay. Direct the Board's attention to a proclamation on Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Month for April of 2013. That can be found in the Board Packet as Exhibit 6. Also, a proclamation for National Safe Digging Month, also for April 2013. This reminds people as they get ready for spring, and they're starting to dig holes in their yard, to make sure to contact... in their yard to make sure to contact Julie. Next, we have a request from the Exchange Club of LMV, which is a branch of the Rotary, I believe, who are requesting to place some temporary signs in four intersections within the village from April 20th through May 5th. They'll ask for motion to authorize the Exchange Club of LMV to display four signs at the proposed intersections within the village of Mundaline. Motion by Lentz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sullivan. Who's here from the LMV Exchange Club? No one? Okay. It looks like a lot of kids, so I thought maybe somebody was here. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Clerk call the roll.
Lentz.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Hold on. Last minute discussion.
There's no description of the size of these signs, is there?
Yeah.
Where? Oh, there it is, four by six. We allow four by four signs?
Mr., who's in it? Amanda?
Yeah, these are the signs they had up last year, and they are reusing them this year, so.
All right.
And we, we gave them permission to put them last year?
Yes, we did.
Nothing terrible happened, so I guess we'll?
No.
All right.
Go again. Okay. Any other discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Lentz.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nutchnig.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next is a motion to move the start time of the regularly scheduled village board meeting on April 8, 2013, from 7:00 PM to 7:30 PM, and I believe this is to allow for the budget meeting. Motion for that, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Boss. Any discussion on the motion? Clerk call the roll.
Meyer.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Nutchnig.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to trustee reports. The Public Works Committee trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 25, 2013 Public Works Committee meeting. Make that motion.
Okay, motion by Meyer, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Lentz, discussion?
I'm sorry, don't those have to be approved by the people on this meeting?
Yeah, I guess being a Public Works Committee meeting.
That would be you.
Okay, so that's Meyer, Nutchnig, and Simple. So I guess, Mr. Nutchnig, you have to second them.
I'll second it.
Okay. And any other discussion? So only the two of y'all vote on them, then Simple's not here.
Meyer.
Yes.
Nutchnig.
Yes.
Okay. Passed. Good.
All right, and the next motion I'd like to make is a motion to adopt a resolution regarding the Emerald Ashmore Management Plan.
Okay, motion by Meyer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nutchnig, any discussion on the motion? Clerk call the roll.
Meyer.
Yes.
Nutchnig.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
And that would be all I have for tonight, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Boucher, do we have anything, and I, fortunately, I missed the discussion meeting of this, do we have anything on the, on our website that's going to cover this or is covering this issue? Or, Mr. Lobato?
Yeah, I, I think we actually posted the management plan just last week, perhaps.
Okay.
So, if it's not there, Adam, I see you're shaking your head, is there?
Yeah, it is posted, and we plan on posting some additional links to some of the IDA websites as well.
Okay.
And we also, there was an article in the newsletter that just came out, so.
Okay. Yeah, I guess the point I was trying to get at on that is it's good to put the information out there, because I think there's, all the things I've been reading suggest that there's really not much you can do other than plant a new tree, but I think there's plenty of people marketing ideas of what you can do, which seems to be throwing money into a hole. So I think the more information people have, the more informed decisions they can make on that. Okay, Finance Committee trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have one motion for the Finance Committee. That motion's been, that's for a payment to be removed from the bill list, one to pay AT&amp;T invoices totaling $5,063.12. I believe we will have an abstention from that vote, and I will make the motion.
Okay, motion is made by trustee Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second is by trustee Boss, any discussion on the motion? Clerk call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Nutchnig.
Yes.
Meyer.
Abstained.
Lentz.
Yes.
Any motion carries?
Mr. Mayor, and this evening on our omnibus list of motions is one to approve the payment of bills, these bills totaling $1,383,810.40. Some of the major items on that list, one of them to RA Mancini, this is an amount of $141,345. Third payment for work on the Holly Street Water Main renewal replacement. Another major amount to Weston Solutions. Two, two amounts, actually, one for $228,338.40, another for $371,41.63. For the, the first for the pre-construction work, design of the village hall, the second, I believe, for the public infrastructure work. Third major amount to be paid is to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, this for a semi-annual loan payment for our sewer treatment plant, this is an amount of $175,390.12. If anyone has any questions in regard to the bill list or other matters of finance, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, my computer froze. Okay, then that'll take us to Public Safety Committee. Trustee Simple is not here, so Mr. Lentz is the vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there are no motions this evening. Chief Sashco, do you have anything for this evening? Okay. Chief Gunther.
I'll say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Community Development trustee Boss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have one motion tonight. That motion is to pass an ordinance amending certain sections to chapters 4, 5, 8, 10, 12, 13, 14, 17, and 18 of the zoning ordinance Title 20 of the municipal code. As a reminder, we are amending our new zoning ordinance to correct grammar, spelling, cross-references, and information regarding motor vehicle aftermarket enhancements, light pole heights, commercial vehicles, parking stall dimensions, driveways, and definitions, and I will make that motion as seen in Exhibit CD1.
Second.
Boss, seconded by trustee Sullivan. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
While I support, and I've said this every time, while I support the majority of the items and the changes in this ordinance, I don't support the driveway one, and so I'll vote no.
And on smaller spelling and grammar corrections, you'll vote no on that, too?
Well, because it's all in one motion, I either have to vote yes or vote no, and because there's one item in there that I don't support, I'm going to vote no.
Okay, I, I see. All right, any other discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Boss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nutchnig.
Yes.
Meyer.
No.
Lentz.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Then I do have a list of new businesses to Mundaline, but also as a reminder, well, there's a few things. The first reminder is to everyone that the reason that we read these lists is because we would like our residents to support local businesses, and the second thing is, I believe, these are now put on our village website. Yes? Okay, so that if, if I say something and you later think, oh, I want to try that, you can go back to our village website and look those up. So, we have Joseph's Mobile Cleaners that open at 1240 Allenson Road, the PETA Inn, which is fabulous if you haven't been there, I recommend it highly, though be prepared to wait. I understand, a week ago Saturday, they actually had to close for a while because they ran out of food. It's an incredible operation. The Cellular Corporation, which is a Verizon retailer at 1178 West Maple. CP Illumination Corporation, which is a distributor of light bulbs at 401 Washington Boulevard. Dr. Nishimoto, who's a doctor of psychology, has opened up an office at 505 East Holly. And Bark University, which is a full-service dog boarding, daycare, and training and grooming facility, if everybody remembers, that came before us a year ago to open, is finally opening at 1414 Armor Boulevard. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Permits Committee trustee Nutchnig.
Yes, Mayor, I have no report tonight, but I've got a motion tonight to approve the minutes of the March 11, 2013 Permits Committee meeting, Exhibit PMT1 in your packets.
Second.
Motion by Nutchnig, second by Sullivan, any discussion on the motion, and it has to be?
Nutchnig, Sullivan, and Boss.
Very good. Nutchnig, Sullivan, and Boss. Okay?
Good side of the room.
Clerk call the roll.
Nutchnig.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
And Boss.
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
That is all for tonight.
Okay. Transportation and Infrastructure trustee Lentz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there are no motions this evening, only report regards the Lock Lowman report, which was emailed to the Homeowners Association, I believe, today, and then others went out to several other residents there as well, so that's out, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other trustee reports?
No, Mr. Mayor, but I might say that I, too, have enjoyed the PETA Inn, and I would say that having been transformed from a Krispy Kreme to the type of food that PETA Inn offers, that the average Mundaline resident should live at least a year or two longer.
They certainly can get the award for the most extensive building renovation, I think.
Yeah, it looks like a wonderful spot, and the food is great.
I wasn't available the night of their grand opening, but it's on my list. Great, thank you. Okay, we have a number of items on the omnibus agenda, is there anything that anyone wishes to remove at this time? Your motion to approve all the items?
So moved.
Second by Boss, second is by Nutchnig, any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Boss.
Yes.
Nutchnig.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, all the omnibus items are hereby approved. Mr. Lobato, you have a report for us, please?
Yeah, I just had one item tonight, and that is, I'm looking for a motion to approve purchase order for a codification of our ordinance, and the reason I put this on the board's agenda is because our budget for this year is about $4,000, and it's going to cost us $7,688 to do the codification, and as we, Mr. Flynn indicated in the report that you received, that this is due to just not anticipating or not thinking about the, how big the change was going to be for the zoning ordinance, and so that alone was north of $4,000, just to do that codification to our municipal code book and also update the ordinance on our website. So, I'm asking for a motion to approve the purchase order for $7,688.
Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Trustee Boss, is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Lentz, how many of the actual books do we get these days? Because we hardly use those anymore, right?
No, we use them. We've, I, Mr. Flynn can correct me, but I think we order 25 hard copies of the changes, the amendment, amended pages, and then we make copies of others if we need more, and then a good part of the work is on the website, keeping that current.
Right.
So that's about, I think that's correct, is that right, Mr. Flynn?
Okay, yeah, just, I guess I would just make sure that all, all the physical copies that we buy, that we actually use them, because I think I gave mine, I told them I didn't want one anymore, because if I ever need to look up an ordinance, I go to the website ordinance, and they're just expensive books.
Oh, yeah, they're very expensive, and then we, I think we get a PDF version on a disc, so if we have a need for more, we can copy those.
Well, as long as we analyze what we're buying and make sure we're?
Mr. Mayor.
We're actually using them. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, and I, I had sort of the same concern, you know, each trustee has a book, and, you know, it's, and I leave mine in the village hall up next to the copy, and I saw today, it's gone, it's on vacation again, it'll, it'll come back sometime, but I wonder if we need those books at home. It is available on the website, and if there's a copy, and we're going to have a new, in the new village hall, we're going to have a trustee's room, or a room that, that's not a place for a single copy. Perhaps we can reduce those even more than just the trustee's copies.
Well, the way it works is, most of what we pay, we pay $22 a page.
Yeah.
And you get all of those books. If you got zero books, you would pay $21 a page. Most of the cost of the, that we pay to municipal code is in the codification itself, not in the copying.
Oh, I, okay, I misunderstood.
So, so you'd only save about $300, we had about 300 and some pages, so you would save $300, so it really, it really, that amount of books is enough to, we do books for certain staff members, the board, the attorney, so you really don't save that much by not doing.
And I was thinking it was $22 a page, for each page in each book.
No, no.
All right, all right, fine, I'm relieved, thank you.
Boss.
Yes.
Lentz.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nutchnig.
I have no further report, Mr. Mayor. On one item. Actually, I do. We received a letter today from the county clerk advising us that their office will validate and count provisional absentee ballots for 14 calendar days after the election on April 9, and that they will hold the canvas of election on April 25.
What that means is that number you see on the internet, the election night, could change because they're going to add stuff to it later?
I, I think that's what it means, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. I noticed a lot of young people in the room tonight, anybody want to say why, what you're trying to accomplish?
Yeah, we have, we have an AP Government class at high school, and we're, one of our class projects is to follow a local election.
Oh, okay.
So, part of it is that we get to come here and experience one of those board meetings, so we're all in attendance for that.
Great, all right, well, I hope you, I hope you got to learn something about what's happening locally here.
We should have had a better debate forum, had we known that.
We'll gear up for one, maybe you can come back. You might already know this, but our agenda's on the, on the website, and the minutes will be on the website, so you can kind of... be on the website, so you can kind of, it's interesting to read the minutes to the meeting you were at and see how that looks. I'll ask for a motion to recess into executive session to discuss personnel, person 25 LCS 120, section 2C1. Is there a motion? By Meyer, is there a second?
Second.
Second is by Lance, any discussion on the motion?
If you, if you want.
Jump the gun? I'll amend the, I'd like to amend the executive session call to also include, include land acquisition, person 25 LCS 120, section 2C5. You wish to amend your motion, or your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, trustee Lance will amend this second. Okay, any discussion now? Clerk call the roll.
Yes.
Meyer, sorry. Lance.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nutschnig.
Yes.
Boss.
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries. So the state law allows for us to have discussions in private for a few matters, and one of them is personnel, one of them is land acquisition. So at this point, we'll ask any of you who are not involved in that to move across the hall. If you want to stay till the end, we'll come and get you and you can come back and there'll be one... Clerk call the roll. Boss.
Yes.
Nutschnig.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Meyer.
Here.
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 Boss.
Mayor.
Okay, thank you. In the executive session, we discussed a number of matters, some where some staff follow-up, the other is a motion that is required to amend the fiscal year ending 2014 Employee Reference Manual for the Village Department Line. We discussed bereavement, leave, and emergency or family homelessness. The staff has prepared some ordinance, and we discussed modifying the definition of the family member to be a little bit more in line with the Children's Home Leave Act, the definition of the medical care. So the staff's going to work on that. So with that modification, we have a motion to pass this ordinance and amend the fiscal year ending 2014 Employee Reference Manual.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Boss, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Nutschnig, discussion on the motion? Clerk call the roll.
Boss.
Yes.
Nutschnig.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Lance.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We've given some confidential memos. If you could get the parts that are confidential back to Mr., actually get the whole thing back to Mr. Lobato, I can take care of it. Is there any other business?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a question. It's in regard to motion A on the omnibus support items, where we wrote off 11,000 plus in debt. That's, I guess a question, like, for our finance director. Even though we've written these off, are these going into the state program for debt recovery?
They'll try to collect them.
Do we have social security numbers on them? So...
That's probably...
Something we should begin to collect when we issue orders, permit, or whatever we do that has a periodic collection of funds. Yeah, I don't know how we really are going to identify the debtor if we don't have social security. Well, okay, but we're going to submit these to the state and, interesting to see what they say in regard to the identification that we provide. Right, thank you.
All right. Any other business? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, a meeting is adjourned. Thank you.